All right, good evening. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the regular city council meeting on July tenth and just shortly after six thirty. Uh, Mr. Donahue, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Yao?
Here.
Councilmember Lorrimore?
Here.
Councilmember Tesari?
Mayor Rigby?
Here.
Mayor Proten Plod is absent.
Thank you. And tonight's invocation will be presented by Pastor Mark Lee with Vantage Point Church.
All right, let's bow our heads in prayer. Lord, we wanna thank you for our city and the leaders that serve it. We know that the mantle of leadership is always heavy and difficult. There's little pay for their service, and the only thing that's visible are the many critical emails and Facebook comments about seemingly insignificant issues. And while it's easy to only see problems, I pray that you would keep our leaders always hopeful and positive about the community that they, that they themselves are helping to forge. It's a place where teachers like Becky Hill at Rosa Parks Elementary welcomes each student with a hug and doesn't call her class a classroom, but rather a family room. It's a place where during times of tragedy, its churches and its people pull together. It's a place of such diversity that you can see a cricket game being played at Harada Park on the weekends and the pastors by are always intrigued and the players are, are, are always happy to explain. And Lord, we thank you for laws and policies, but the heart of a city can never be found in its policy. Policy can never mandate love and respect. They can never command kindness. It can never inspire greatness. Policy can only limit evil. And so I thank you that what makes Eastvale great is not our shopping, it's not our restaurants. But what makes our community great is the heart of its people and the leaders that influence them. Lord, we love you so much. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much for that. We really appreciate it. And we are, uh, keeping an eye and looking forward to your, your building that's being constructed right now, so congratulations on that. The pledge allegiance tonight will be led by Councilmember Yao, please.
Please rise and join me in saluting this great nation of ours. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
So, moving on, before we get into our additions and revisions, um, some of you may know and have heard, um, we have a, a, uh, a dear friend of ours that, uh, from the city of Norco that has been diagnosed with cancer and is struggling. Um, and in fact, today she announced that her daughter has also been diagnosed with cancer. Um, so I, uh, we reached out to, um, Kevin Bash, Councilmember of the city of Norco, and he has, uh, put together these these awesome pink wristbands that just say Kathy Acevito, um, Warrior Against Cancer. And I would just like to, uh, give one of these to each of my, my council members. Um, and, and if our, our community can just keep her in our thoughts and her in our thoughts and prayers as well as her daughter. Um, she's a, a very great lady. She's been a very instrumental person in this region. Um, she was on the city council for the city of Norco for a long time and very instrumental in a lot of things that they have done. Uh, just a, a great person and, and we just, um, wish to keep her in our thoughts and prayers. So moving on to our additions and revisions, uh, the council may only add an item to the agenda after making a finding that there is a need to take immediate action on the item and that the item came to the attention of the ag- agency subsequent to the posting of the agenda. An action adding id- an item to the agenda requires a majority vote of the council. Mr. Donahue, are there any additions or revisions from the staff?
Yes, Mayor. Our, uh, finance director would like to add an additional item to our consent calendar.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Um, I'd like to go and add item number seven point seven. This item was a continuation from the item back on June twelfth, uh, twenty nineteen where the city council approved, uh, the resolutions for the district declaring the intent to levy, setting the public hearing uh, for today, but since that didn't make it on the agenda today, what this items are, the two resolutions will be opening a public hearing for the next council meeting on July twenty fourth.
Great, thank you. Um, are there any, uh, council members that would like to add or revise anything on the agenda? With seeing no other additions other than adding item seven point seven, I would like to solicit a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Donahue, vote please.
Councilmember Yao?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorrimore?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. Item number four point one, presentations and announcements. Item four point one is a presentation of a military banner participation for Sarah Enriquez. Uh, Ms. Enriquez was not able to attend tonight's meeting, so we'll make sure that her, uh, that her certificate gets to her. This is just an awesome program that we have within our city and especially with owning the streetlights now, we're able to expand that program. Uh, to be able to recognize more of our, our, uh, military personnel that are serving from our community. Item number five, our student liaison report. Uh, Mr. Roman was not able to attend tonight. Uh, we are during the middle of his summer, so I would imagine he's out enjoying his summer break right now, but we look forward to his update at our next city council meeting. Moving on to item number six, public comments. Any member of the public may address the council on items within the council's subject matter jurisdiction but which are not listed on this agenda during public comments. However, no action may be taken on matters that are not part of the posted agenda. We request comments made on the agenda be made at the time the item is considered and that comments be limited to three minutes per person. Please address your comments to the council as a whole and do not engage in dialogue with individual council members, city staff, or members of the audience. Mr. Donahue, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mayor, we have three comment cards. The first one is for Dennis Green.
Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for the opportunity to be here. Tonight I'm wearing a different hat. I'm wearing the hat of Green Comm Inc., which is my public relations company. I do a lot of work all over, and tonight I'm here to give you an update on the sixty swarm as it's been dubbed by Caltrans. Late in May thirteen, the contract was approved to McLaughlin Engineering by the Attorney General to improve the Route sixty to the map that you have all the way from Route eighty-three down into Riverside in three segments. It was a late approval, and it was an A and B contract. What that means real quickly is you bid time and money. It's an accelerated contract. So the contractor must bid money as well as time. Caltrans brought me on board in late May and asked me to help them out to coordinate this project. And then I had the May holiday, and then we had the school commencement ceremonies, but so we're rolling out a very aggressive project and I'll give you the details of it as quick as I can. So they brought me on board and on the twenty-seventh, well, Caltrans began before they brought me on board. They had a public meeting in Chino. It was very well attended. They scheduled another one for last night in Ontario, was not very well attended. But on the twenty-seventh of June, I had all five cities at the Doubletree in San Bernardino for a very nice meeting with emergency responders to update along with the elected officials that this project is rolling out. Now, what the project consists of is replacing all of the bad concrete on the freeway in the number two lane. Uh, the plan calls for closing the eastbound lane all the way from the sixty at the fifteen all the way to the sixty ninety-one two fifteen in Riverside. The reason being, when you do the middle lane, you excavate the entire middle lane. You can't have traffic on both sides of you in a three-lane section. It's unsafe. The carpool lane is gonna be used for emergency responders to get through. We've met with them already, talked to them. We're gonna get them through ambulance fire on a bona- bona fide call will be allowed into the construction zone. We've met with CHP, Fire and Police already, and CalFire on our emergency response plan. So we began, we had a very nice meeting with all five cities. There'll be a follow-up meeting on August the eighth at the Marriott in Riverside after two weeks of closures so that we can vet what has happened in the cities. So there'll be a follow-up meeting. So in the meantime, what we've done is next week there's been a massive media campaign. It's gonna be rolled out with print as well as broadcast media, English and Spanish. I brought handouts tonight that are in English. I have Spanish versions also. All the collateral ma- material has been created already and is being disseminated. So, we're going to have, uh, uh, SBCTA was there also and RCTC was in attendance at this meeting on the twenty-seventh at the Doubletree because we need to coordinate all of this work. And my message to everybody is that we need to do the three Cs. We have to collaborate, coordinate, and cooperate, or we won't get this work done. All of us have to talk, and that's why we had all five cities there to begin this collaboration and coordination. I know that you have some local events. We'll be doing the best to coordinate with those as I did on the Limonite Project with the Pumpkin Patch Christmas Tree Farm. Caltrans brought me on board because I, I don't wanna brag, but I'm the most experienced PR person in the area, used to working with multiple cities at one time. I built all of the seventy-one, working with all three cities at the same time. I've worked all over the Inland Empire, so they asked me if I would help them out through my own company. They knew I was on Limonite, I'm on Te- and I'm already coordinating with the Express Lane people that were there also. So, what we're doing, next week a big media campaign is gonna be rolled out, English and in Spanish. Uh, then we're gonna also have meetings. I've already met, I'm at Good Morning Riverside tomorrow morning. I'm at Riverside City Council uh, on the sixteenth. I'm at Harupa City Council on the twenty-first. I'm back here on the twenty-fourth. We're supposed to give an update on Limonite, but I'll be talking about all of the work that's gonna commence on the twenty-second of this month. The contractor's gonna be working in the blue area on the handout you have. That will be lane closures only at night for that week. From ten to four, it'll be closing lanes to repair concrete. The orange section is where the total closure will begin, and that will begin on the twenty-sixth of this month. And they'll go for eight weekends in a row going eastbound. When they get all of eastbound completed, they'll turn around, they'll go westbound for another seven weekends. There are heavy fines and penalties if the contractor does not make it within that period of time. What's driving all of the projects now all over California is SB one. The money is being rolled out, so I contacted Caltrans. I said, we also need to coordinate with District Seven, Los Angeles Caltrans, and guess what I found out? They issued a contract on the sixty in Los Angeles County and the contractor is Atkinson, same contractor working on Limonite. Picked up that concrete replacement job. The benefit of that is all of the contractors know about the coordination that must take place and working together. And so I'm in the middle of it coordinating all of that work out on the sixty and the Badlands, the ten that's going on. So with our project here, it's gonna be very aggressive. Uh, we're looking for the media next week. We're gonna have the city council meetings we're going to. Uh, we're gonna be in Riverside. I've met with the emergency responders. We're meeting with Ontario. We're gonna meet with your emergency responders again tomorrow. I'm right back here in the morning to meet with your emergency responders to coordinate how this is gonna work when we detour. The problem is we're gonna be detouring, closing the sixty at the fifteen all the way into Riverside to replace the bad concrete one direction at a time. All of the ramps in that direction are gonna be rebuilt and repaved at the same time, so that when we get out, everybody's out. I'm also coordinated with Caltrans, bring your maintenance people in, get that work done also, so that when everybody's gone, everybody's gone. Don't let the contractor move and then bring your maintenance crews in. So all of that coordination is being taking place right now to get in and build this project. Let's get, the only way it's gonna happen is a collaboration, the coordination, and qua- and the communication. And I'm on, and that's my mission right now. So, I'm about out of time.
Ma- Mayor, if I might just say, uh, um, it, it was brought to my attention that there was a desire to have an out- update from Caltrans tonight at council meeting, and we put out a call to them at, I think it was three or three-thirty PM. And, um, within about thirty or forty-five minutes, they confirmed, um, that Dennis Green would be here tonight. So I, I wanna thank Dennis for dropping everything to make sure that we could be one of the first cities to hear this at a council meeting a- and, and I truly appreciate that. I also reached out to him earlier in the week because the contractor over here is kinda having a lot of debris all over the place, and that's not the Eastvale way. And he assured me that the contractor's gonna clean up their, uh, uh, um, debris fields, uh, um, i- in the southwest quadrant on the Eastvale side, so.
That is gonna happen.
So, um, I, I said, we don't want it to be a code enforcement construction issue, so, um, thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Appreciate you, uh, coming and sharing this update with us. Um, I was made aware of this to, yesterday, I think it was, yesterday?
Yeah.
And, uh, um, so I, I really appreciate you being here. One of my big concerns and questions is, is, um, I hope that our PR guy from Limonite and our PR guy from the Swarm project are helping us as a community know, because my big concern is, is when the Limonite is closed, that's gonna affect people trying to go north of Eastville, because if the Limonite's closed, they take Hamner up to the sixty, and if that's closed, that's just really gonna make a, a tough time getting out of Eastville, so.
And that's kinda why I was brought on board. I've got my finger in a lot of pies, on a lot of projects, and I'm in the best position to help coordinate the work. And I worked with Golden Voice down on Jefferson. I'm used to coordinating big events with freeway construction. And we held the last two Coachella festivals. I was in coordination with Golden Voice because of the I-ten Jefferson projects with the bridge out. And they were very successful. That's why they brought me on board here, my knowledge of how to do things and get it done together. And we can all get our projects built together. Your local events, we can help make sure that happens, but it's gonna take the collaboration, cooperation, and the communication. And I'm gonna be in the middle of it with the team that I brought on board, that, two weeks ago.
Thank you, and you've done a great job with us, uh, with Limonite and our communication team here i- at the city, so we appreciate it. We know that'll continue.
A great team to work with, and it's gonna ramp up starting tomorrow.
Great. Thank you, Dennis.
You're welcome.
Mr. Donahue, next speaker is Eddie Torres. Mr. Torres, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for having me. As you know, the, uh, government signed the budget, and I would like to highlight a couple of the budget wins that the Assembly Member was able to bring back to our region. I'd like to start off with seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in one-time funding to expand the Norco College Veterans Resource Center as well as another seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in one-time funding to enhance the workforce development programs in Norco College as well as in conjunction with Senator Roth and other local elected officials in the, in the Inland Empire. Thirty-six million dollars going towards twenty-five judgeships in Riverside County. And then separately, there was in the budget, five point four million dollars going to go to Riverside County for their Department of Child Support Services. And that is all that I have for today. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the update. Councilmember Yao?
I, uh, so just to clarify, you said that seven hundred and fifty thousand is going towards the Veterans, um, Center at Norco College?
Yes, there is. Mm-hmm. And then there's also ten million dollars in ongoing funding for Veterans Resource Centers throughout California. But seven hundred and fifty thousand is going straight to Norco.
And they are accepting the money and are they allowed to, I guess, are they allowed to accept the money? Cause I know the last conversation that, or the last rumor, I guess, that I heard from RCCT is that they're, they're not allowed to accept the money?
I'll get back to you on that. I'm not sure. I know there's a lot of change going on with Norco College, but I can get back to you on that, Councilmember. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, next speaker is Keith White. Mr. White.
First of all, yes, I attended RCTC for two hours, cause they had a public hearing for serious disabilities, how to improve transportation. And all the bus companies were the Sunline, Army, uh, not Army, Sunline, Palaberry Transit, um, RCA. Um, so there's had a public hearing for that to improve transit. So, that's what I issued out for Riverside Transportation for the T-N-A-L, North, the T-N-A-L. April, excuse me, August third, from eleven AM to four PM, Riverside Transportation will be at the backpack giveaway. Every little mistake, bachelors working out one thousand pa- one thousand backpacks to needy kids with screw supplies in them. Plus they have fun games and all that, so RCA will be there to support them. So, those are the things I just want you guys to update on. And I'll bid to T-N-A-L meeting tomorrow in Norco.
Great, thank you, Keith. Really appreciate that. Councilmember Lorrimore, so were you there today, Keith?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I was there from eleven to one yesterday.
Excellent. So the, that same item made its way up. We had a, uh, RCTC meeting today and it was four hours. Like, so, I tried to get Todd to go for it, but he, he, he didn't, so.
I didn't fall for it this time.
Right, exactly.
We have there's also, like you said, that Hville is growing so big, you need to get more bus stops to figure out how to get three wheelchairs on a bus, because of about twenty-nine lines, they have to have two wheelchair for two hours straight. So that's an issue that was RCTC because in twenty-fourty, the buses have to be electric, a new law coming in.
Thank you for being involved. Thank you. Mr. Donahue, do we have any additional public comments?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number seven, the consent calendar. All matters of the consent calendar are considered routine and are to be approved with one motion unless a council member, staff member, or member of the public requests separate action on a specific item. Mr. Donahue, do we have any, um, um, staff members or any members of the public that have requested to pull any item?
Yes, Mayor, um, we have some comment cards for item seven point five.
Okay. Would any member of the council like to pull any items?
I would like to pull, um, seven point six.
Okay. If we don't have any other items to be pulled, I would.
We'll move the balance.
Mr. Donahue?
Councilmember Yao?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorrimore?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Great. Let's move on to item number seven point five, affir- affirmation of acceptance of offers of dedication for track number three zero nine seven one. Ms. Vega, please.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. Good evening. Um, in addition to the members of public here who wish to speak and have pulled this item, I had also requested that this item be pulled because before you is a revised version of the resolution that was in the packet. Uh, I received a, a phone call from Council for the Enclave Monday morning, and yesterday she reached out and sent me some revised language that she had suggested. I, I considered it. Um, and while what is before you now is not an exact replica of what she proposed, I did sort of take her comments and concerns into account regarding some of the verbiage in the resolution that's in your packet and scaled it back a little bit to a, to a more streamlined version before you this evening. And so, uh, my recommendation would be to approve the revised resolution that's before you at your dais. Uh, also, I'd just like to point out that I have confirmed through, um, our city engineer who consulted with the, um, uh, CalFire, the person who reviews plans, that the city does actually have a need for these, uh, areas that were offered up for dedication. So we did confirm that, that the city does need these areas before we just accept them. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. And was the revised resolution, is that available in the back for members of the public?
Yes.
Thank you. So, in the back counter, this is available for any members of the public that would wish to review it. Mr. Donahue, can we start with public comments on this, please?
Yes, Mayor. Our first comment card is from Tiffany Scarborough, and she has time donated from Nicole Tran, so we'll get a total of six minutes.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. My name is Tiffany Scarborough, and I actually represent the Enclave. I'm here with several of the homeowners who have asked me to speak on their behalf and also wish to speak with you regarding the matter with Lennar. We appreciate that the, um, the city did consider our res- our, um, proposed changes and revisions to the, um, resolution as we did have rather serious concerns, as the homeowners did, and I, and I stand here speaking on their behalf, some of whom are not quite as comfortable speaking in public and ask me to speak on their behalf. But, uh, they do appreciate that the, that the city attorney reviewed it, that the council is, is going to consider the revised resolution, but would like to make a few more comments. First of all, there's some su- significant concern about whether or not the, um, the, the city has the right to, um, I, I, let me back up. There was an encroachment easement that was pre- uh, permit that was previously allowed here. And there's a litigation, as you're aware, because the enclave's position is that it owns the property on which a wall it sets and in which the, um, sewage is going to be tied in in the water. Uh, the concern is when Lennar showed up at their meeting, they said, we are going to do this work. The enclave said, we believe we own this property. I have heard you today speak about Caltrans, about the need for community and working together and what happens in that regard. And that's not what's happened to the enclave. The enclave is an association of your citizens. They live here, they work here, and they're concerned about their future here. And Lennar is here to build at least two new developments going on right now and take their money and leave, and they're not concerned. From what the enclave can see about your residents, the people who live here, the people who are staying, they are concerned about the money and they're done. We were, they were asked by the enclave to sit down with them and speak, to find out about this gate, to help, um, basically design it in a way that the enclave feels safe. That was, that really didn't happen. Uh, they, there was, there's concern about flooding. There's concern about the fact that this was originally farmland that became low-density housing, that became moderate-density housing and, and was not high-density hous- housing when the enclave was in fact developed. Now, you have high-density housing, and in a small area, you're gonna put two hundred and fifty new condominiums. And they're gonna tie into the sewage system for the enclave. And the question the enclave's been asking and hasn't really gotten a good answer from is w- was the sew- were the sewage pipes designed to, to do this, to, to handle two hundred and fifty new homes that tie in here? And guess what happened? They have not gotten a good answer. Nobody can understand from the enclave's perspective why Lennar's not willing to sit down and talk to them, why the enclave's concerns aren't being taken into consideration, or why they can't participate in with the city to de- or just between the two parties to design a gate that if it is going to be required and the city's going to do what they wa- what they think is best for the city, obviously that's your job. But why can't there be a position here where everybody's needs are met and not just the developer who's gonna take the money and run? Because right now, the enclave is worried about people jumping over the fence, about coming into the fence, about sewage that if it doesn't, if the piping, if the sewage pipes aren't the right sizes, all the repairs are gonna be made on the enclave's side, right? I mean, they're gonna rip up their roads and they're gonna have to pay for them. Nobody in the new community is going to have to, because this, this is south flowing, right? And so we have a problem here. And there's no community here. If you wanna talk about the relationship between Lennar and the enclave, there's no communication. We had an agreement between the parties that all the work would stop while we tried to resolve it, and they came in unworked anyway. So, the concern that my client has is, one, this is premature. While we figure this out, there is a court case pending. There's a temporary restraining order in place right now. Lennar reached out so that they can get this passed, so that they can now do their work and, and end around the tiaro. But shouldn't we have time to fully investigate this and determine who actually does own that property and whether or not there is a right to build on the property that's at issue, this lot KK, Triple K? Uh, th- there's a lot of concern here and, and, and the, and again, one of the big concerns for my clients, for their community is that nobody cares what they, the community, actually thinks or is concerned about. N- nobody cares whether they're, they're safe, whether they have a gate that opens onto their property. If it gets stuck, does it block off the alleys on their side? Are the roads gonna be ripped up every time a sewage system that can't handle the extra sewage has a block or the houses have blockage and, and have some sort of a a problem with overflow and what, and what have you, all the things that happen when you have a black water situation? And, and we've been asking for quite some time for a sit-down, for some discussion, and we get told there will be a discussion, and what we're really told is you'll do what we want. And that's not what I heard. That's not what I heard when you all were talking about Caltrans and the need to talk about a community atmosphere and a community working together. And so, in my last few seconds, I'm just gonna ask you to reconsider whether or not, this is hasty, whether or not this should be put off until we can actually determine who owns the property. And I'm gonna ask you to please work with the actual citizens of your community to make sure that they are safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, do we have any additional public comments on this item?
Next speaker is Jane Curl.
Good evening. My name's Jane Curl. I represent Lennar Homes of California. I wanna thank the council for having the time, giving me the time to speak today. I also wanna thank the audience for their patience. I know that there's a lot of strife in the world, so it's nice to have people that can get together and try to work things out, but still be cordial. Um, and I know everybody'd rather be outside on this beautiful summer evening too, so I thank you very much. I'll try to make this as brief as possible. Um, fear mongering is easy to do, but when you look at the facts of this case, it's really about families and homes for those families. This project has been reviewed very carefully on two different occasions by the County of Riverside and by the City of Eastvale. It was carefully analyzed, professionals looked at it, everybody determined that Lennar could perform the services necessary to build these homes for Eastvale families. So, Lennar performed the work pursuant to the development permits, the conditions of approval, hooking up the sewer line, the water, building the emergency access gate, a gate that will be closed to the public and only available for ambulance, fire, police people. It will rarely be opened. This gate is similar to the gate on the other side of the Eastvale community, lot JJJ, that was dedicated in the same dedication as the disputed lot here tonight. That was dedicated in the same dedication as the disputed lot here tonight. Lennar strives to be a good neighbor and has sat down on no less than two occasions for lengthy meetings with the enclave in attempt to work this out. We were unable to do so, which brings us here tonight. I want to let the council know that the plans for the sewer and the water were prepared by professional civil engineers. And went through all the staff reviews with the Jerupa Community Services District, as well as any necessary city reviews. Professionals have looked at this. They have determined that it is safe and that the capacity is there. The sewer and water system is no different than any sewer and water system elsewhere in Eastvale or the Jerupa Valley area. There is true that there is pending litigation going on in this matter and that we seek to this dedication to attempt to resolve these issues. We continue to be open to work with Eastvale on this issue and to be working with enclave on this issue. But we do request the clarification from the council tonight. This dot matters a time of the essence. California is in a housing crisis. There are families in Eastvale that do need these homes to be built. These are gonna be quality family homes for Eastvale citizens. I request that the council affirm the resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue.
Next speaker is Lisa Rodriguez.
Thank you for granting me the opportunity to speak. I stand here today as one of the residents this council represents. We, the residents of Eastvale, will remain. However, Lennar will disappear from the east, from Eastvale once development has completed. With that being said, I am concerned with your decision to play, place Lot K K K of the enclave on your consent caler- calendar. At the very least, I request you to postpone it to allow more time to research fully the history behind Lot K K K. I am equally concerned with regards to safety. For the residents of the enclave closest to Lot K K as well as damages to the Eastvale prop- enclave property. Damage which would include but are not limited to solid weight, I'm sorry, the solid wall protecting water from flowing. On enclave property due to the elevation differences north of Lot K K K. Their water flow would possibly enter into nearby garages and garages and homes. Possibly altering the walls' structural integrity, the wall that's remaining. Fence hoppers, theft, break-ins. Concerns regarding the direction of the emergency access gate opening potentially sticking causing restrictive access. To the homeowners' garages and alleyways who are in close per proximity of Lot K K K. Lastly, my concern is to Lennar's interpretation as to what the consent entitles them to. They, Lennar, have are, have already months ago tar- torn down the wall, constructed on Lot K K K. Trespassed onto enclave's enclave property, creating potentially hazardous environment for the residents near the location. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue.
Next speaker is Beverly King.
Thank you. In addition to my presentation, I also have a uh comment from a another. Uh homeowner that I'd like to read if that's possible into the into the record. Okay, so uh Mayor Mayor Rigby, thank you very much for for hearing me. Council members, the same. Uh, my name is Beverly King. I'm a resident of Eastvale and I'm also a resident of the enclave. Uh, I serve on the HOA board uh as a treasurer, but I'm here tonight not as a representative of the HOA. Uh, board, but as a homeowner with personal experiences which are reflected in my comments. Uh, I asked the council uh to remove the item seven point five from the consent calendar. And allow individuals that live near K K K and J J J uh so uh so that they can actually comment. On uh the this item and have uh an uh their their reactions included. They have not had that opportunity, uh and many of them have things to say that concern that concern them. Uh. Uh, it is correct that we did meet on on uh two uh situations with Lennar. The first was a uh homeowners' association meeting where. Uh, we invited the representative from Lennar to come speak to us about about the Prado development. Um, and as the questions got more and more involved, like what does this mean, you know, what about? Uh, uh sewage, what about our land? If the stuff is really on our land, not on yours. The stuff outs for the sewer, the um uh fresh water and for the storm drains turned out. To be not where the asbills said they were. They were in fact on our property and remain on our property. Some have been connected, some I believe have not. Uh, that the meeting degenerated into a a statement that that basically ended up saying. We have lots and lots of attorneys. We're interested in building homes, not how they affect you. That's how it ended. And the people left. So there's three, there's three points that I am particularly concerned about that I'd like to talk to you about. The safety and security of the gate. We want a gate that's not climbable. Uh, uh it because that's a problem with J J J gate. And in addition to that, we want a a gate that goes on to the other side. Drainage, the Rinda, the street on our side is wider by two feet. And also lower by over a foot than the other. And and finally, I ask that that you encourage. Um, meeting and consultation and transparency. That people have an opportunity to know when work is going to be done on our property so that they can take adequate. Uh, measures to find places to park and to get into their garages. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue.
Next speaker is Gary Tran.
Hello, councilmembers. Um.
Hey, Joe.
Clint.
So I'd like to first, um, well, obviously, we're talking about seven point one here. And the first thing I'd like to do is actually read a statement from one of our community members or our members. Uh, of the Enclave Master Community Association because unfortunately she wasn't able to come herself because her mother had just passed away. Um, this is a statement from Linda Ortiz. I am the original owner of the home in the enclave development in Eastville, which overlooks the new Lennar development. My house is at the back of the dividing wall between the two properties. From the very beginning, the development has completely destroyed the quiet enjoyment of my property and now is adversely affecting my property value. When I purchased my home, I was told that I would always have the farm behind my home with the view. I paid extra for the lot. From day one, when the construction machinery came, it was obvious that this was to be no more. The workers start driving through the property before six thirty AM. They turn on the heavy construction machinery around six forty every morning, six days a week. This constant noise awakens my family with a jolt every single morning of our lives. The workers blow whistles at each other all day to get their attention. When they begin subdividing, the machinery kept hitting the dividing wall between our properties. This is so often and so loud that it made my house physically shake as there had been an earthquake. This happened several times each day for months. The vibration caused my furniture to move, pictures on the wall to shook and moved. Photographs on top of tables bounced across the tabletop. When they cut a hole in the wall and put a flimsy piece of wire fencing between our property and theirs. I'm a single mother of two young women. Every time I look out the window and see that flimsy piece of fencing, I'm frightened that somehow. Someone will push it down, come to my property, hop the fence and break into my home. The dirt and dust is appalling. It's covered my entire home. It's covered my windows and my patio. I've had to hire a company to come out and power wash my entire house and the windows at very high expense because it looks so awful. No doubt, I will have to have my home cleaned again in the few mo- in the next few months because the dust and dirt is never ending. Yes, they have water trucks to spread the dirt, but they just sit idle all day long. In the last six months, I've also developed a cough, which I'm sure is caused by all this dirt in the air. My neighbors and I have lived here for over six years. We have paid property taxes. We voted for you. We shop locally. It does not seem morally morally correct or fair that a large corporation can come in and ruin people's lives and property values just because they have deep pockets. We have all been adversely affected by this company and the way they are doing construction. We would very much appreciate you listening to what the res- residents of Eastville have to say and not just decide in a large. Corporations favor because at the end of the day, the people matter much more than the company ever will. So with my last twenty four seconds, um. I'd like to remind this council that when the city of Eastville incorporated in two thousand and ten, one, the basic tenants was more local control of government. To es- essentially advocate more for the citizens that actually live here. I'm here as a board member that represents four hundred and ninety homes. And I understand that there's a need that uh this, the city attorney has stated. But that need is kind of balanced against four hundred and ninety homes versus one corporation seeking profits. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue.
Next speaker is Jeff Smith.
Good evening. Uh, thank you, councilmember, uh Mayor Rigby and members of the city council. Um, I am Vice President for planning at Lennar Homes. And uh we are the developers of 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 the Prado community, uh which is our newest gated community in in the city. Uh, Lennar's had a long history in the city, uh over thirteen years we've been uh building in this area. We um take our relationships with the agencies, with our home buyers, with our neighbors very seriously. Um, just the other day, I was talking to our sales and marketing vice president and and over twenty six percent of our sales are from referrals. So we have a vested interest in maintaining great relationships for the long term. And I know there's been some comments uh made otherwise, but we do take it seriously. We wanna be good neighbors. In this particular situation, however, the Prado community has been planned for many, many years. It's gone through all the approval process with the tentative map, track map, with SEQA, our final maps. All the proper notifications have been uh completed and and performed. Um, all the improvements were done in accordance with our encroachment permits that would, that's been issued by the city. And uh the Water and Sewer Agency. So um we believe we've gone through the process. Um, as as we should have in accordance with all the rules and regulations uh that we've agreed to and we've been a part of. Um, we, the the product community is a gated community. And the Lot K K K that we've been discussing is part of an emergency access gate. The gate will be open. Ex- extreme rare circumstances where for some reason there's an emergen- there's an an emergency need to gain access to the back. Uh, we're proposing a gate that is uh has vertical slats, uh which I believe would address some of the the climbability issues. Uh, the gate's been approved by the city, uh planning and building department. Um, and we bu- we believe it's it's a, it's an appropriate uh gate for the very rare use that that would be employed. Um, we, uh, you know, we, you know, we're here to, you you know. Compromise as best we can with our neighbors. Uh, if there's issues of noise or if there's issues of dust. We're more than willing to work with our neighbors. This is the first I've heard of those complaints. So we're more than willing to uh work with our neighbors on those types of issues as we have on all of our uh developments. Uh, we have had numerous conversations with enclave and unfortunately, uh we've been unable to reach an agreement with them. But um with the dedication that's been performed on the final map. Um, it's very clear that this Lot K K K is owned by the county and subsequent to the county, the city of Eastvale. So we would appreciate your approval tonight of uh validating that dedication. And so we can move forward with our with our community. So thank you very much. I'm also available for any questions if if you may have any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Donahue, do we have any additional public comments?
No, Mayor.
All right. Then I would like to turn to council for any questions or comments. Just sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, have we been engaged, any of our staff? Uh, or any of the council members uh regarding this uh issue that's been going on? Or is this something that uh that sounds like the homeowners' association and the residents have been going straight to Lennar? I don't.
The the city is not involved in the lawsuit itself.
Not not the lawsuit, but I mean.
I found out about it a week or two ago and Councilmember Plot did receive the same email I received yesterday. From Council for the Enclave. And I spoke with Councilmember Plot about about it. And whether he was, would like to continue the item since it's his district. Um, and he's said he was confident that you all would be able to hear everyone out and make a decision. I'm unaware of any other communications. With him, uh he he indicated that he had not been reached out to anyone else and this was the first time that he had heard about it. But subsequent to that, I don't know what, who may have reached out to him.
Yeah, I'm just surprised because if there was a issue, I I would encourage you guys to come to either. The council members or to staff and discuss it and allow us to at least contact Lennar and and try to. Reach a amicable resolution. I I, you know, so I'm I'm really just surprised that uh we didn't have the ability to. Have any input on that uh situation.
I think just just off of that also, it brings up a point um of. It was mentioned that this was on the consent calendar and that residents would like to see it on another portion of the calendar. Just as a reminder and clarification, just because it's on the consent calendar doesn't mean that residents aren't allowed to comment. We had residents, we had. Developer here this evening commenting, so um just for clarification, the consent calendar is is not. The only difference between the consent calendar, correct me, Erica, if I overstep, is. Um, the consent calendar is typically one motion to approve a number of items versus. Um, council business is different items that are specifically um. Uh, that we plan on saying something or we plan on having a discussion, but the con- consent calendar, just as tonight we're doing. Um, can be anything on the consent calendar can be polled and a resident, any resident or any person. Can come and address any topic on the consent calendar. So just because of like consent calendar doesn't mean that it's. Um, not important or that residents or developers or businesses can't come and comment on it, so. Councilmember Yao.
I I I agree with Councilmember Tesari. It it caught me by surprise by a little bit because I've I've actually. This is my first time hearing all these concerns. Um, I I do wish that I had received a copy of those comments or e- like. Even either through emails or phone calls or in person or anything like that. Um, I definitely would have appreciated that. Um, and at this moment, I don't feel comfortable making a decision. Um. In fact, I would like to make a motion to table this item, especially without the presence of. Uh, Mayor Potem Plot and I I know that that's his district, so I would love to um have a discussion with him before this.
Councilmember Lorimer.
Thank you. Um, okay, I wanna go back. Uh, earlier, Erica, you had, um. You have looked into this. Uh, you were saying that the emergency vehicles that are emergency service providers require this access.
Correct. Um, the offer of dedication was, is for road and access control. And uh for both lots J J J and K K K, what you see on Lot J J J is is a gate, to my understanding, and then that would be for emergency. Access only. And that was the intent for, at the time the map was approved, for to to um also be a similar gate on Lot K K K. Uh, I reached out through the city engineer who um contacted uh the Cal Fire to ensure that it's something the city still needed. Since this was approved in two thousand and nine by the county and she confirmed that yes, it's a secondary access point for em- emergency vehicles. And it is necessary.
Okay. So i- i- in my mind, um. It it, if it is necessary for public safety, and I think that public safety goes on both sides of that wall, including. The residents that are saying they don't want it there, um I I would actually like to make a substitute motion. Uh, that we accept the um. The the affirmation of acceptance of offers of dedication for track number three zero nine seven one.
Thank you, Councilmember Lorimer. Um, I just have a couple of of questions, comments. Um, there was mentioned too about, kinda about uh just construction development and dust and noise. And once again, as a reminder, um if there are those issues, that's what we have our community enhancement and safety team for. Um, I've used them. I used them, was it today or yesterday, regarding something very similar, not that area. Um, but just make sure you utilize those if if you do see dust or you do um have the the. You hear of the work commencing before it's supposed to. Um, similar to Councilmember Lorimer, my concern is. That 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 this gate is.
that, that, that this gate is needed by um for public safety. And I think that's something that's um i- is crucial, is a top priority to us. The question that I have is, is on lot JJJ, that gate that's there, how often is that open? Do we know? Do we know, has CAL FIRE ever gone through there? That's in the south portion of the enclave there or even law enforcement?
I don't have an answer to that question and I don't know if, if I, law enforcement.
Mister Mayor, good evening. Mister Mayor, council and staff. I have to be honest, like, like the council, this is the first I've heard of it, of any of these discussions. We would be glad to research any questions you have about access, calls, frequency. Uh but, but we would have to research and get in, come back, you know, with that information.
I've recorded a, a number of maps in, in my career as a civil engineer and uh um, these, these offers of dedications for emergency access are fairly routine. And, and they're only, the gates are only open um by emergency responders in a, in a code three emergency response. So it, it is both for um the, so, both communities on either side in an emergency, if they need to evacuate or, or should fire, emergency responders need to get into a subdivision and they need to get somebody out of an ar- area in an opposite direction, that they have multiple ways of ingress and egress. But it is not so that the uh um, a normal uh resident of either one of these communities is going through or opening up this gate. The gate will have a, a, a normal uh, uh lockbox that is only accessible by the fire department in an emergency response. So I don't even believe that law enforcement have that access to those gates. It's just the fire department. And it's so that they can get there, when a, when a home catches on fire, they bring five to seven to ten rigs uh to put that fire out. And I'm, I should say trucks and engines. And um, and they're coming from multiple directions and they, and they need to be able to get in and get people out i- i- in an emergency situation. And that's what these gates are for.
Thank you. And that's, that's my concern is, is that if there was a need on the enclave side or on the Lenar development side, that if we denied this, it's a risk. It's a risk of our public safety and I, in my opinion, I don't know that that risk outweighs the public safety of our residents, uh both our current and our future residents. I, I think if we, if we are to approve this tonight, is there a way that we can make sure that Lenar ensures that the gate is up to some of their concerns such as uh, like the, I think it was, um, I'm sorry, Jeff Smith mentioned that uh, that it's gonna be uh vertical slats, so it's not easily climbable. Um just to make sure that, that those things are, are addressed. Um and then I think also just regarding the whole sewage thing too. Once again, those are calculated out by, as was mentioned, professionals that make sure that, that those are calculated properly. Um so I don't know that that's really a valid concern.
Y- yes, the su- sewage flow rates and, and, and whatnot. And, and there's ways to clean them out without tearing up the roadways uh and it, it, our sewer lines are maintained by uh the Rupo Community Service District on a regular basis uh to, to, and they run what's called a pig uh through the sewers. Sewer pipes to clean them out. And so um that is routinely done and they're routinely inspected uh um to make sure that they are operating and functional, so.
Okay. Great, thank you. Is there any other discussion among the council? Councilmember Tesari.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. And this went, uh, this process, during this process, they had to go through the planning commission, correct?
Correct. The map was approved by the county, but a major development review was approved by the planning commission just last year.
And were any of these concerns uh brought up at that time?
Not to my knowledge.
Anything? Gary, was, uh, did you guys bring anything up then at the uh commission?
If you can come up to the microphone, please. But then you need to open up the public comment again.
We'll go ahead and open public comment back up.
Thank you, Mister Mayor.
At the time uh that the Prado project came to the planning commission, I uh did, did address some of the issues of, of the gate. It's not that we have a concern of using the gate uh as, as public service. It's that, that we have a concern of people jumping. The uh, the gate at, that we've been presented with in the past is the same as the gate at JJJ. It's very porous. It's very easy. We just, uh, two weeks ago, we had homeless that climbed over and set up, two of them set up an encampment. That is the concern that we, that we have. It is, I, I have seen the gate used. I've never seen it used by fire, but I have used, seen it used by police. Not very often, but, but it is there for, for public service. But it is, uh, I raised the issue of security be- because we're so sensitive to it because we had so many jumpers um and, and people climbing, a five-year-old could climb the, the gate at JJJ.
Thank you. So just for clarification too, the Lenar project is a private community, gated community, or is going to be a gated community. So it, the thing we have to think about too is, is we're talking about one gated community and then another gated community. I don't know, me personally, from jumping fences, not that I do it a lot, but I would think that, I would think a, a block wall is easier to scale than a wrought iron vertical slap fence. It just seems a little bit easier to maneuver up onto a block wall rather than trying to get your feet into a, a wrought iron wall.
Mayor, I, I, I just spoke with Lenar and, and they said that they, they would work to enhance uh, uh, the, the design of the, of the gate so that we can move forward tonight uh um to address some of their concerns. And so um I, I will work with the, the homeowners and, and Lenar to figure out what that gate looks like and, and make sure that it, it is a um, uh, n- not just something you can easily hop over. Um but you are correct, a, a, a block cedar fen, uh, or a block wall is much easier to climb than a vertical slap gate. In, in my climbing experience.
Mister Mayor, I would also be hopeful that uh now, what, once the uh project is complete and there are residents moved in there, that maybe some of those problems will be alleviated as far as the jumpers because it's not going to be open anymore. So hopefully that would be the case. I wouldn't expect your neighbors to be jumping into your neighborhood. I would hope not.
And that was kind of my thought with, you know, you have a gated community next to another gated community that's going to be even harder for a random person. Since public comment is so open, I'll go ahead and a- acknowledge the two of you and we'll be the last two and just give you thirty seconds to a minute since, since everyone's already spoke. So um, go ahead and Mister Smith, please.
Thank you. Um, as uh city manager mentioned, uh we, Lenar would be willing to either keep the current design with the vertical slats. But to address the comment, um if there is an issue with, uh, if that's still climbable, we'd be willing to put on like a, like a mesh that would be, make that gate more opaque. Uh, we, Lenar would be willing to do that to satisfy the concerns of the enclave. So I just wanted.
Thank you, Mister Smith.
Mister Mayor. But had, had there been any suggestions made by any of the residents at the enclave that would make it to your satisfaction? I mean, had there been any? And, and what were those? But I know what you're, you, if you're gonna say, what I think you're gonna say, there have been attempts, but nothing's happened. What are the, I want to know what the suggestions were.
Okay, well, that puts me in a difficult position because the attempts happened in mediation and that's all confidential. And so all I can really feel comfortable saying, and I don't think anybody's waived. I don't think anyone's waived the mediation privilege. And my, and the only opportunity that um the enclave had to give suggestions was in mediation. They were rejected, is my understanding, but I don't think I'm, I'm in, at liberty to say anything more because everything that happens in mediation is privileged unless specifically the privilege is waived.
I, I understand. And the reason I ask is I, i- if they're gonna give us some assurances that they'll make modifications, if that's reasonable, then I would, you know, at least like to know what the expectation is so that we can ensure that it occurs.
I think there's been some discussion here about actually working together and perhaps the best way to work to do that is to let um and some representatives of the enclave work with Mister Jones and Lenar as he suggested. And so that their considerate, or their concerns can actually be taken into consideration. I mean, we can give it lip service here today, but that doesn't mean when we walk out, anything happens. But if there's, but the suggestion sounded like a good suggestion to me that he actually take the laboring or to make sure they both have, that at least the enclave gets to have some say in the gate that's gonna affect them.
I agree with you. It's not just lip service. We're just trying to find out if there's gonna be a, an adequate solution and to ensure that it actually happens.
I, I don't, I just meant, we, it could be lip services if it was just a suggestion and then we walked out and nothing happened. I didn't mean you are giving lip service. So I apologize if that was misunderstood.
Councilmember Tesari, uh, I, I've designed a number of emergency gates and, and implemented a number of emergency gates in, in my time. And I think there's a way we can figure out this. And it, it, it might not satisfy all concerns or suggestions and I, and I'm not gonna say that we are gonna achieve that. Because the, the suggestion is that there isn't an opening period. So, so, so that's not gonna happen. But I think from hearing from Lenar that, that they could put a mesh through the gate so you, you, that it is not as transparent uh through the gate, I think that would be a great a- addition to a gate. Uh um and to make sure it's a, an appropriate height that is not easily scalable, um we can also look at that. So I, I think there's a number of things that we can uh work with, uh but I, I um.
Yeah, I, I don't expect it to satisfy everybody.
Yes.
But if it's a reasonable solution, but I just want, my thing is I want some assurances. If we go ahead and approve this tonight and then they just walk away and I, I want assurances that it's actually, that there will be some type of modification made. Do we approve this with a condition?
So, so, so tonight we have, we have, we, we, we started out with a vertical slap fence that, uh, uh, of, of some ver- verticality. And um they're saying they could add some a- amenities to that. And so we, we can, so as long as it is something more than what was uh previously presented, I, I think that is, is moving in the right direction.
And back to my question though, is, is it gonna happen? I mean, I know you're gonna ensure that you communicate with both parties and I, and I'm confident that will happen. But do we need to add a condition that actually ensures that the applicant?
If I make a suggestion, I actually suggest you leave the resolution as is and then do a second separate motion just directing the city manager to coordinate the effort to um make sure the design of the gate is reasonably designed to reach the enclaves, to address the enclave's concerns.
Okay.
Mister Tran.
Only, only one of you can speak, you know.
He gives me his three minutes, so I get six. He's a resident here. So some of the comments that I hear during the discussions that you have with some of the city management, um councilmember Tesari, we did actually reach out to councilmember Plot, uh the representative from our district in regards to some of their concerns that we have regarding that gate. And I hear a lot of discussion regarding the necessity and the danger that you guys are trying to avoid as far as risk is concerned. But I think realistically, there is no risk right now because the, the gate at lot JJJ services the emergency access that fire and sheriffs actually have, uh cause we control it with the NOX key for the enclave community. And right now Lenar does not have a community, they have a development. Uh so using that as the basis of accepting tonight because of danger, I think is a little mischaracterized. So hopefully um that actually, it's not the basis for the decision that you make tonight.
Thank you, councilmember Tesari.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it, of course it's not in that context. It's, we're, we're looking at the future. You know, whenever it's a completed development, this all has to be done in. Wouldn't make sense to come in after all that everything's built and then knock down a wall and put a gate in. So I mean, it's all, it all has to take place at the same time. Thank you, Eric.
Alright, we're gonna go ahead and close public comment. Any other discussion? With our council? We have a substitute motion on the floor. Do we have a second to that?
Second. Mister Donahue, please.
Councilmember Yao. For clarification, so we're voting on the resolution right now. No. Councilmember Lorimer.
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari.
Aye.
Mayor Rigby.
Aye.
Motion passes three to one.
Do we make the other motion?
Correct. So if you'd like to direct the city manager to work with Lenar and the enclave uh homeowners association on the design of the gate, you could do that as a separate motion.
I would make that motion that uh the city manager act as an intermediary between the enclave and Lenar to come up with a, a gate that's reasonable to both parties.
Second.
Mister Donahue.
Councilmember Yao. Yes. Councilmember Lorimer.
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari.
Aye.
Mayor Rigby.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. Alright, and thank you everyone for being here for that item.
Ju- just to clarify, reasonable is, is to my interpretation, not both parties, correct?
I will trust your judgment on that, yes.
Thank you.
Item number seven point six, adoption of a resolution in support of balanced energy solutions and local choice. Mister Donahue, can you give us a brief report on this? This was an item that has been brought back to, it was a previous meeting.
Correct. Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, the staff is recommending that the city council adopt this resolution in support of balanced energy solutions such as renewable natural gas in addition to zero emission energy sources, as well as maintaining local control of energy solutions. This, as previously said, this was before the city council, the June twenty-sixth city council meeting and it was um it was voted to push this item to this meeting. Um in the meantime, between those two meetings, we did meet with um Leah Peterson from SoCal Gas. And um it was decided to move forward with the same resolution that was proposed at the last council meeting. Uh Ms. Peterson is also in attendance if you have any questions for her. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this item?
No, Mayor.
Council discussion.
Councilmember Yao.
I, I was just wondering, so as I was reading through the agenda, uh, I, I know we tabled the item and so we're here back. We are, but here we are again. And I under, it was my understanding that SoCal Edison had a a different version of this resolution. What happened in between? Why, why is it that's still the same? And why is it that um that SoCal's Edison resolution was not included?
So if I can answer just a, a portion of that, then maybe, I don't know if Erica or Brian have any input on that. We did, so after the meeting, uh, we did reach out to SoCal Edison. SoCal Edison responded to us. Um, I responded to SoCal Edison and asked them, will you be, or they sent a revised uh resolution. I asked SoCal Edison if this was vented through SoCal Gas and they said, no, it has not. And then I asked, do you plan on coordinating and collaborating with them as was recommended by our city manager? And they said, we have no intention to do so. So we met, as was mentioned, we met, uh, I think a number of council members met with Leah, discussed it with Leah. Um but there has been no, uh, I guess, collaboration between the two agencies. And I think that's where we're at now. I think this resolution compared to um what SoCal Gas originally presented as well as what SCE uh presented. I think this is a very good um, in the middle of those. And it kind of just remains local control to the city and doesn't um necessarily support a one uh, uh, a one-source energy provider. I don't know, Brian, if I'm missing anything or?
I think you nailed it on the head. Um, I, it part of the argument was Sacramento's going all electric. a- and therefore we shouldn't be supporting multiple choice or options for our residents. Well, many of our residents already have uh um gas to to their homes and have multiple choices of energy. Um and as we look for Western Community Energy, um and creating that as well, um there'll be another option for our residents. Uh um and so um I think a- as we discovered, um this was, you know, two different energy agencies kind of uh um doing a battle of wordsmithing a- and so uh we didn't give Leah exactly what she wanted in her resolution and we didn't give uh Southern California Edison exactly what they wanted in their resolution, but I think this reflects uh the community and the council a- and and with the choices and options that our residents are wanting for competitive energy choices uh now and in the future. And I think that's about it.
Any other questions or comments, Councilmember Lorimer?
Yes, um I I see that we have a representative from the gas company here. I was um I would like to ask if you had any comments related to the resolution as is in our agenda.
Thank you so much for having me here tonight and I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to address this. Um this was, as per uh your city manager, this is something that I think maintains what the original um purpose of this was, so that there is a message that is sent that you are maintaining local control. If your residents want to go all solar, if your residents want to go all other renewable energy sources um and what's gonna be affordable for them and what's gonna be something that they're gonna be comfortable with um in as they move forward and as your city expands. So that is really what this was about. Um California State Legislature is moving forward with making decisions that uh a lot of times we do not, as a public and local residents, have that opportunity to comment on or participate with. And that's what this was all about, is to be able to have that um input and to be able to say to the public and to um Sacramento that you would like to have your residents have local control over what their energy choices are.
Thank you, thank you for being here, we appreciate it. Is that uh?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Then I am looking for a motion on this item.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Donahue, please.
Councilmember Yao.
Yes.
Councilmember Lorimer.
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari. Mayor Rigby.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Moving on, we have no public hearings this evening, nor do we have any city, any additional city council business, so we'll move on to our city manager report, staff report.
Oh, this is before eight P M, I don't know what to do with myself.
Don't make it long.
I I I I I I was just advised, keep it brief.
Council communication, is there anything?
She's saying be brief, beautiful and uh and and uh quick. So Hamner Place, groundbreaking, it's which is a private event, uh to highlight the groundbreaking of Hamner Place uh is this Friday at ten thirty, so um it it is an invite only uh event. Um but we are excited to get that development project open and all of you are invited. Um so we expect you to be there by ten thirty. Um State of the City is next Jul- uh uh next Wednesday and Thursday, there's a a ticketed lunch event for the business community and anybody that wants to pay to go to uh the event on July seventeenth at eleven thirty, and then there's a free community celebration and event uh uh on July eighteenth in the evening at the high school a- and followed by the infamous Taste of Eastvale, which will be exciting. And it's like going shopping at Costco, uh except for the food's even better. Uh um and then the National Night Out is August sixth at Silver Lakes, uh from six to eight, and the city of Norco will be hosting it. Um as you heard earlier tonight, there's gonna be a Freeway sixty um debacle uh of of construction maintenance uh coming up uh for about a fourteen week period. Um so plan ahead on the sixty on the weekends, uh is like fifty-two or fifty-five hours of the weekend, uh the sixty is not gonna be functional between the fifteen and Riverside. Um and so keep keep highlighted with our social media posts in connection, cause we'll be updating things on those. Um as you might have seen, Dick's Sporting Goods is now open for business and so for all your youth and adult sports ac- and recreational activities, um you can go right across the parking lot and and go shopping, you can even test out their bats in the batting cage and which is awesome, so. Um and I think um Zach Tovar, an an infamous angel, might be here to sign here soon, so um um I heard some rumors about that, so check out their social media.
Cozart.
Cozart. I'm not an angel fan.
Like Tovar, that's our uh, that's her.
We're missing Battalion Chief Tovar tonight. Uh um July thirtieth business, although we love Chief Vike here as well. Um July thirtieth Business Success Roundtable. Um we also have a public safety uh law enforcement workshop or uh public workshop on July thirtieth. Um so uh we're gonna be discussing law enforcement there and the values and needs in uh of the community and giving feedback at that meeting, so we invite everybody to be part of that. Um we have a new accounting manager going to be starting on July fifteenth and we have a new management analyst starting on July twenty second. Um so those items that you approved in the world record uh budget approval in May, we went out for recruitment in June and we went through interviews and we um have two new candidate or two new teammates joining us uh to better serve our residents uh and our our customers and business owners. Um and so we're really excited that and that is a great uh benefit to our community because our budget got adopted, uh a lot of budgets throughout the region get adopted at the same time around July one, and then within the next ninety days, recruitments go out. Well, we were one of the first cities to go out for recruitments, and so one of the one of the positions had over a hundred and ninety-one applicants, uh um and that is an all-time new record uh for talent attraction and development and that I think that's a direct re- uh reflection of our organizational development strategic plan and the culture that we're creating here of a desirable workplace for um people that wanna serve our residents. Um and then I wanna commend our finance team uh for, I think, is it the eighth or ninth year running? Uh G F A O, um huh? G F O A, I'm dyslexic, um um the the Government Finance O- Officers Association awarded us with a prestigious award for an amazing budget. Um and so I wanna thank uh Ernie Raynor, our finance director, and his team uh for the great document that um that that was uh awarded, and we're also looking for additional accolades on the budget a- and hopefully they'll be coming in soon, and then I wanna also share that um if you weren't aware, Ernie served on the rate study uh RFP interviews for J C S D a- and um so we will be uh they will be selecting a consultant here to to review their rate study and we will be very actively involved in making sure our our rates are appropriate for our businesses and residents um so that we can have housing and um business development in our community. Uh um right now, uh we're dealing with some uh opportunities uh for development in our community a- and some of the fees are very challenging and obstacles to overcome for new businesses to open up in Eastville, and so uh we will be reviewing those really closely with J C S D to make sure um uh that um we keep them as low as possible uh for our businesses and residents to to thrive in our community, so with that, um we are excited uh and I'm done.
Great, thank you. Moving on to city council communications and committee reports, League of California Cities.
Um League of California Cities, we had uh the division meeting just earlier this week. Uh Monday, it seems like so far so long ago. Uh yeah, on Monday, it was great, had uh Mayor Rigby, uh Councilmember Tesari and our city manager Brian were in attendance. And um it was a good turnout, it was actually a joint division meeting uh took place down in Temecula. So uh Riverside County, that means all the cities in Riverside County, they're part of the league, met there along with Orange County and San Diego County. And um this year, uh assuming that he it it will happen, uh he is in line to be the president of the league, he is a council member down in Urieta, he addressed the crowd uh the in attendance and um he will be president of the the entire body of the league, he will be the representative of all cities. Uh so be interesting uh in the coming years, so it's great to hear from him. And more than this, we have the executive director uh for the League of California Cities in attendance. So um it was it was great, it was a great opportunity um and this is stemming from a a desire of these divisions at the down here to come together, share ideas of best practices of how to move forward um in in government, but also if there are ways of collaborating um on uh common interests, uh particularly in relation to the state uh and some of the policies coming down out of Sacramento that um are not exactly designed to uh benefit cities, but instead take away local control. So uh that that was a a good meeting, um and I don't know if uh anybody else that was there would like to say anything on it.
You did a great job, it was it was a great meeting, so thank you. Uh do you wanna continue with SCAG? Is there anything to report?
Yeah, um SCAG, we we have Southern California Association of Governments. Tomorrow, uh there is going to be a a a set as chair of the Legislative Communications Membership Committee. New members have been appointed to that body, so we're gonna be having an introductory meeting. Also, next week for SCAG, um we will be having a a planning session for the year on for the executive committee, which I get to sit on. Um so it it's gonna be taking place with the 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 president of SCAG for this year, um who is Bill Yon out of Big Bear, so that should be interesting. The problem is, we scheduled our uh State of the City at the same time, so I'm gonna be running up the mountain, down the mountain, and my boss is wondering if I actually work for him, so, all right, yeah, that's it, thank you.
And just to the uh add to that, the uh committee meetings have been postponed to the twenty second of July.
Great, thank you, and W R C O G.
Uh that meeting was canceled.
R T A, uh I believe is Councilmember Plot and he is not here. Um Western Community Energy, we met today. Uh there's, we're actually, I know I've mentioned this a a few different times that there comes a point that we are basically all in, I don't wanna say necessarily all in, but there becomes a financial obligation with Western Community Energy if we're in and if we decide to pull out from there, and that's coming up real quick. They actually wanted us to get a vote on it today, and I said, no, I don't feel comfortable voting on this without running it by my council first. So um with that being said, we need to bring this back, so staff, if we can bring this back as soon as possible, I know that our next council meeting is the twenty fourth. Unfortunately, I will be out of town that day. So it's really up to my colleagues on if you want to have this item presented um without me being here, we can have someone from W C E here to present and answer questions also. Um or otherwise, we would have to call a special meeting. So it's really up to what the council wants and prefers, but we need to give direction to staff on how to prepare what we desire.
So would you guys like to make a decision without him? And have it handled on July twenty fourth to join the Western Community Energy J P A, or would you like to have him present?
That's what I would prefer, the first option.
I'm sorry, but you want the option of not having Todd here?
I think we already know what his position is.
Do we know what your position is, Todd?
I don't know, do you?
I don't know that that this time is really the time to talk about that.
Can't get into a real substantive discussion, cause it's not on the agenda.
I feel comfortable making a decision without the mayor present. Rather than have a special meeting.
We'll have a representative from W C E, W C E to answer any questions because um they are the most qualified to answer any of the questions.
And we'll go forward with that. Then if we can prepare that for July twenty fourth, and the reason we have to do that is because we have to basically send a decision to the C P U C by, I think it's August, the middle of August, so it really makes it tough, um and it kinda came up real fast, a lot faster than we really intended, so. If there's any specific questions that come to mind before that, feel free to reach out to me, uh I'd be more than happy to to answer. Northwest Mosquito and Vector Control District.
Meeting's not till next week.
Riverside County Ta- Transportation Commission.
Um had a four-hour-long meeting this morning, um with that, I told you guys that already. Um and it was heated and there were a lot of residents there from Corona um that were making or having their uh providing input. Uh some of the decisions that were a little bit controversial in nature had to do with um whether or not uh R C T C, Riverside County Transportation Commission, has a what is called Measure A, which is a half-cent sales tax which we pay uh when we purchase anything. And um it has been on the books since nineteen eighty-nine and it is going to go through twenty thirty-nine. Uh up for proposal today was whether or not to spend four million dollars uh to educate and also get feedback from residents as to uh whether or not they would like to have an additional half-cent sales tax placed on them. And um so the 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 meeting became very long a- and that was part of the debate, I I ended up voting uh to not go that route and um but the the vote went down twenty to ten or passed twenty to ten to engage in this uh exercise, and so four million dollars uh to be spent between now and the intention is to have this on the ballot in December of twenty twenty. Also, up for discussion was whether or not uh the tenure plan for transportation projects that will be funded um in the region and also whether or not the uh board should uh stand by its commitment to keep what the toll lane money on where the in the toll lane area. So the ninety-one toll lane, for instance, it was specified e- by statute that money needed to stay within that corridor if there were excess toll revenues. Um and now the the rules of the game have been changed as of today uh that that money will be able to go to areas around the ninety-one corridor as well. Uh which is of concern to me in that I believe we had promised similar things with the fifteen corridor here that the money off of the uh express lanes or the toll lanes would stay in this area, so. Um what I I believe happened, and again, the vote was a similar vote of uh twenty to ten. Um what I believe happened was tyranny of the majority. And um the 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 minority suffered because it ended up being the city of Corona that's saying, hey, what's going on, and the rest of the county's saying, no, we want that money, bring it our way. So uh that 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 was, that that's the down and dirty of it. Uh I'm very appreciative of um Mr. Green coming out today. Uh part of that, and we we had a discussion, Mayor and I, yesterday about uh a question that arose relating to the sixty and um anyway, so he came when we called him and it's great to have him here, so thank you.
Thank you. Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Agency.
We haven't, uh we don't have a meeting in July and August.
All right. But we did have a species of the month visiting us just a second ago. Alright. But we did have a species of the month visiting us just a second ago, right? Don't know where it is now.
It was a baby spider.
JCSD Parks Commission haven't had a meeting, but we did recently have our picnic in the park and just wanted to say thank you to JCSD, Law Enforcement, Fire, for all, everything that you guys did, making that a successful weekend. Um, Finance Committee.
Uh, meeting is next week.
Great. Is there anything else that needs to come to council's attention? Any comments, announcements?
There's a Trace Atkins concert tomorrow at Silver Lakes. Hope to see you all there.
Anything else? Council member Yao.
I, I was, um, a resident actually brought this to me, he sent me an email, um, and a message over social media about this. Um, on Sumner and Sixty-Eighth, that intersection, again, from what I was told, that there's been at least two accidents there just this year. And, um, a few of the residents have requested for a review of that intersection and see if it's possible to install a stop sign. Um, happy to talk about it after this meeting, but just wanna bring that up.
Thank you, we'll review it.
It, stop signs require a, a warrant analysis to, to install it, so we can't just install them per the request, so. Uh, we, we will review, uh, Sixty-Eighth and Sumner and we'll get, get back information back to you. We'll make a note of that.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, we do have our Public Safety Commission meeting coming up. What day is that again?
It's July thirtieth at six P M or six?
That's the Public Safety Workshop.
Oh, the Public Safety Commission meeting?
Yeah.
Is Jul-, uh, July twenty?
July twenty-third and the promoters from
Oh, yes, the promoter.
Tailgate Fest will be there presenting?
Yeah.
So if there's any questions or anything that anyone has for regarding that event, it'd be a good opportunity.
At the Public Safety Commission, July twenty-third, which starts at six thirty P M, the Tailgate promoters will be present to highlight uh, and answer any questions from the community, so, um, it'll be a great opportunity, but uh, uh, so far, we've been working really closely with them, RSO and Cal Fire to address and the building officials and to address all the needs to make sure this is a successful event in, 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 uh, Eastville.
Great, thank you.
And tickets are still on sale, so.
Alright, if there's nothing further, then, uh, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. And the next meeting of the Eastville City Council will be on July twenty-fourth at six thirty P M and this meeting is now adjourned.